I think they are all coming. She's on maybe six twenty-nine.
Yeah, it seems like I've been six twenty-nine for a minute and a half. You have six thirty? Somebody has six thirty? Okay.
I do.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna call the special town meeting Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty. Here at the Newry Town Office in the town name Oxford. Greetings in the name of the state of Maine. You are hereby required to notify and warn the voters of the town of Newry. County of Oxford qualified by law to vote on town affairs. To a meeting here at the Newry Town Office at four twenty-two Bear River Road, Newry, Maine. On Tuesday, February eighteenth at six thirty o'clock in the afternoon. Act upon Article One through Two as set out below. Article One is to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. So I'm asking for somebody to nominate David Bonney as moderator. Nominate Dave Bonney as moderator?
Second.
Anybody else would like to vote on moderator? I have three votes, so I'm required. Would you like to vote? Okay. Thank you, Dave. I'm trying the meeting over to you.
Okay. Let's see. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Um, I'd like to follow the Maine Municipal Association Moderator Manual for this meeting. And then like to receive a vote by show of hand if that's from...
I would make a motion that... I would make a motion that we use secret ballot.
Secret ballot for...
For the article in question.
Okay. Um, could I, um, would people in agreement that we could follow the Maine Municipal Association Moderator Manual for this meeting?
I make a motion we do.
Could I have a vote for the positive? Yes? Anyone want to vote yet? And any no's? So we will conduct our meeting under the Maine Municipal Association Moderator Manual. Allow, call for a motion to allow personal, there's not a voter in town to speak. Um, this requires consent of two-thirds of the voters. Doesn't look like we have any non-residency here, but I believe that's the formality that we let's go through.
Go ahead. Amy? Yeah, so we... We want to, we want to allow our... I'll make a motion we allow Amy to speak.
Second. Second.
So could we have a vote on that too? Yes? And no? Is that unanimous? So, um, we'll move on to Article Two, which is to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to dispose of tax-acquired property on such transand conditions as they deem in the best interest of the town. Um, could I have a motion towards that effect? An affirmative motion that we would like to continue on with Article Two?
Make a motion that we continue on with Article Two?
Could we get a second?
Second.
And therefore it's now open for discussion.
Can I make a motion that our vote is by secret ballot?
Would anyone like a second tap?
Second.
And can we have a vote for the positive? Um, any no votes? Um, so I would say we'll be voting by written ballot. And any further discussion?
Yes. What is that, best interest of the town?
Amy, do you want to explain the history of how we got here? You want to try to explain the history of how we got here?
Uh, sure, sure. We can certainly discuss what's in the best interest of the town. Um, right now, we have passed an article to authorize the select board to dispose of tax-acquired property for principal cost and interest. And that we can issue a quick claim D once those have been paid.
Did you say quit?
Quit claim D.
Quit claim.
Yeah. Um, and that's what the current article states at the last town meeting, Warren. So, um, we were approached by the treasurer for the Jordan Association and asked us if we could start foreclosing on the back taxes for the quarter shares at the Jordan. And when I did some research and looked through the liens on those properties, we never issued a waiver of foreclosure on those liens. So liens, once you start them, they automatically foreclose in eighteen months after the date they're registered, the registered deeds. So essentially, we did foreclose on all of those quarter shares. And I was transparent about it, told them that we did. Um, so when I went back to each individual account, some of them go back eleven years and we're not going to be able to redeem the principal cost and interest over eleven years worth of taxes. So, um, we needed to have a broader scope of authority to dispose of that tax-acquired property because those quarter shares are not worth fifteen hundred dollars in some cases and up to five thousand dollars in others.
Is there any other liens on the property besides the taxes?
Um, so tax liens are first on all main property, main property law. Tax liens are first in the hierarchy of liens. Um, so once you purchase a tax-acquired property, um, you should go through the quiet title process. Um, and that's at the buyer's cost. So, um, I know that there are some other liens on some of them. Some of them have mortgages. Um, and they're not paying. We've notified them that there's liens that were maturing. Um, so there, there are multiple reasons why we felt it was necessary to come to the voters and ask them for a broader scope of authority to get rid of these quarter shares because they've been sitting there for a really long time. And if we only had three years of back taxes, we probably could have auctioned them off for principal cost and interest. But in this situation, it, it doesn't look like probably half of them, we're gonna get that. Um, the other big piece to this is, um, I contacted Maine Municipal Association, um, as well as some other towns that have quarter shares. And we found out that the town is not required to pay maintenance fees on quarter shares or timeshare units. But when we sell them, we have to disclose that the new owner may be responsible for those, um, maintenance fees and the time in which the town owns the property. So as you can imagine, nine years or ten years worth of maintenance fees is a lot of money. And that is a determining factor if we're gonna be able to sell some of those units.
Yes, go ahead.
Has Sunday River or, or the Jordan or whoever, have they contacted you or been in communication with you to, to buy it? Was there a price discussed?
No. They have been in contact with us, but they have not talked to us about maybe purchasing them, um, and then trying to sell them themselves or how they wanna deal with it. Um, tax lien law is not as clean as other types of lien law. So if they put a lien on the property for back maintenance fees, um, their, the title process is cleaner for the new owner than it is for tax lien law.
So, I gotta say, a big change for me, I always believed that the town didn't want to buy them back because we owe the HOA. We would have to pay the HOA. And I thought we actually voted on the fact we didn't wanna take them back, but I'm not sure we ever did.
We did.
We did.
We voted on that one, right? So the, the change, the, the big change is we don't have to pay the HOA.
Right.
Municipals don't have to change the HOA. Now that, with that, now with that little bit of information,
Right.
I think we owe it to the town to say, okay, we're changing course here, but we wanna change course because we don't have to pay the HOA fees. The second piece of it, it becomes, uh, the, the money that, as the tax dollars they're owed on some of these, we're not getting. It's, I, if it's, you know, but we're not getting it. No one's gonna buy it and pay the taxes, places and work it. So it puts us in a position where we're stuck. Unless we can sell them for whatever it is we can get. But the big change for me is that we don't have to pay the HOA fees. We don't. Apparently, apparently some of the towns did, but we didn't. So that's why, that's why I would recommend we go forward with the ordinance. That's why we vote that, that we got some of the change. That, you know, with the vote, with the positive vote to say that we can dispose of this. And we're only talking about disposing of the quarter share units, correct?
No, it's tax-acquired property.
So it's all...
So, I, I would, please, please, um...
Yeah, Tom, I'm good. Yeah, I'm good.
Then we had you first.
Yep. Yeah, I didn't know if it was possible to talk with the associations to possibly get them to waive those fees for the new owner to work, work with the town, you know, if we...
We've made, we, we have contacted them to talk. Jordan has agreed to speak with us about, um, being able to waive those or not being able to waive those. But we didn't have authority to negotiate any kind of deal because of the restrictive way that the article was written that we passed last March that says you have to have cost, principal, and interest. So, you know, they're not gonna give up all of their HOA fees if we're not, you know, if we're not gonna say, okay, we're gonna sell them to you for, you know, a thousand dollars instead of four thousand dollars or something along those lines. Like, we didn't have any wiggle room to negotiate anything with them.
Well, we own them and they want them. I think that's legal. And that's a legal negotiating power.
I don't think they want them.
Well, someone's gonna want them at some point. And one more question while I have the floor. At the end of the, the citizen article, we have to label first, is that right? Mandated by the state to sell them? The town has to dispose of the properties by April first, which is the owner of record date?
Yeah.
For assessments for the state of Maine. Can you just explain what that means?
So every year you are assessed on your property based on April first values and the owner record of that date. So, you know, we haven't had a tax lien sale here in seven, eight, nine, ten years. I haven't, I looked through everything I could find on, on this to see when the last time we sold any property for tax liens. I, I could not find anything. Um, so it's been a long time. Um, but I think the policy of the town has always been, well, we're not gonna, um, we're not gonna go through the foreclosure on liens, on the quarter shares. And that's all of them except for, there are three other parcels that we're, that we have.
The April first, oh, that's right. The April first, they get it off the books for this year.
Oh, it's not a deadline, is that what it's saying?
It's, no, it's not a, it's not a line in the sand.
Yeah.
But we get it off the books for this year.
Well, if they're not worth much, it's probably not hurting the books too much, then.
Did you have a comment, John?
Uh, yeah. One, I would recommend that there be a stipulation in the ordinance to differentiate between quarter shares and personal property or somebody's business or what have. Secondly, there must be some protocol, um, mandate in which to dispose of these properties. It's not any town's, um, responsibility or business to be in the real estate business, is my understanding. So in the interest of the town, I would, um, suggest you go by state mandate and whatever the laws require in disposing of these properties. I understand, or I'm getting the understanding that these properties are, you, we as a town owe more on these properties than they're worth. Is that correct?
I would say the prior owner owes more taxes on the properties than their current real estate value is.
A simple yes or no would be sufficient. Is, is that correct? Who owns them now?
So we technically own them for foreclosed taxes.
So...
They're worth less than the tax amount.
Exactly what I asked. Yes or no would have been sufficient. Um...
Majority of the, of the accounts were speaking of yes.
As a whole, the town is not gonna, is more likely to lose money than to even break even. And we're gonna take steps in the future not to foreclose on them then?
Yes, we are in the process right now to move forward with not, um, to, yeah, yeah. That's a, a select board just discussed that about the ordinance that would give the authority of the HOA to collect the taxes. And then we wouldn't be foreclosing on them. They would.
So we're taking steps to move faster so the tax bill doesn't fill up? Correctly or wrong?
Well, there is...
That's what we're trying to do. That, that, sorry.
I, I, it's a, I don't mean to be vague about it, but it depends on which way the select board decides to go. If they decide to, we're gonna do what we're doing now. Every year we'll be, we'll be foreclosing on units and we'll be selling them every year. If we decide to go with the ordinance route, the ordinance route, we won't be dealing with this anymore because that will be authorizing the HOA, the Owners Association, or the Jordan and the Summit to issue the taxes and claim and redeem the taxes and pay the town.
You're mixing two issues here. You're talking about...
So I'm...
You're mixing two issues here. You're talking about something that the town doesn't even have awareness of, and you're talking about this. So you're talking about a future action. You're gonna turn them back to the Owners Association, but that isn't the subject of this conversation.
So was the question making sure that we don't ever do this again?
We're correct.
So, yes, if we pass that ordinance, this will never happen again. If we choose not to pass that ordinance and we go down the road that we're doing right now, we will be selling them every year and we'll be having a tax sale every year. So yes.
This ordinance gives the power to do that every year?
So, um, this article right now is not an ordinance. An article to authorize the selectmen to, um, sell off the tax-acquired property at the best interest of the town has to be passed every single year. So this gives the selectmen the authority to dispose of the tax-acquired property we are currently have from now until June thirtieth. And then when we go to town meeting in May, we will have another article that will probably be very similar to what we have right now that says principal cost and interest. Because we will have already cleaned up all of this prior tax-acquired property and we'll just be moving forward in a manner that makes better sense. We wouldn't have to do this if we didn't have five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years worth of back taxes.
Hmm, any more discussion from someone who hasn't spoken yet?
Why couldn't this just wait till the town meeting? If the April thing wasn't an issue?
Every year we...
You'd have more people here.
We've, every year we vote on this. Every single year. It's in the town meeting, Warren, on how you are, um, authorizing the select board to dispose of tax-acquired property. So I am suggesting that this is a very short-term issue with, because we have multiple years' worth of taxes that we have to deal with because it hasn't, we haven't done anything with them in a long time. And it gives you a shorter authorization window to take care of them. And then after that, when we foreclose on nineteen taxes, you'll get principal cost and interest.
Okay, I just don't think, think there's gonna be much happening between now and the actual town meeting with any of it.
I think we're gonna sell them between now and town meeting. Or to auction them or put them out for bid or...
Okay. This is a suck of one every day, huh?
So, so, um, any discussions from somebody that hasn't spoken yet? Hmm, I think you, you're next.
Let me think. What is the actual value of the properties that are being auctioned? And what is a fair price to accept for those properties? Are you, uh, telling us that you can accept one dollar for the properties if that's a high value?
Uh, I don't think that would be in the best interest of the town. But I think that having a minimum bid of five hundred dollars for one of these timeshares, but owe a thousand dollars or fourteen hundred dollars, um, is probably gonna be around about a year. But I don't know that because they fluctuate all the time. We see the tax transfer sheets come in anywhere between two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars a pound unit.
The Craigslist, they've sold it five hundred bucks. I don't know what reason that is, but they've sold as low as five hundred bucks.
For, for a unit.
For a unit, yeah. The, the other thing that I think is an interesting number is that the total tax dollars we're talking about here is under fifty thousand bucks, right? I mean, in, in total, you know, on our, but it's, and, and fifty thousand dollars matters. I don't wanna say fifty thousand dollars doesn't matter, but in the, in the bigger picture of things, it's fifty thousand dollars. It's not, it's not five hundred million dollars. It's...
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, it's a, it's a relatively small, it's a relatively small expense if we get zero for it. But hopefully not gonna get zero for it. But, you know, at the most would be fifty if we absolutely zero for it. If we had to write them off, we'd be writing off, it's not quite fifty, correct, Amy?
So it's forty-seven thousand at the Jordan and eleven thousand dollars at the Summit.
So it's sixty.
But that includes the interest and the, and the fees that it costs us to register everything at the registered deeds.
So in this scenario, the town takes a loss?
I don't know that the town's gonna take a loss, but on some of these units, the town's very likely to take a loss. So we need to be, we need to come and get the authority to get rid of the units for a loss because some of them are not worth as much as...
So in the meantime, this unit is, is, uh, doing business as usual. In other words, they can rent it out, use it. There's no consequence for any of the three parties that own the rest of the quarter shares. Is that correct?
I don't know how that works.
Well, they're obviously still using them, huh? That the town has, doesn't have a X on the door.
So the reason we don't have to pay the HOA fees is because we're not involved with the HOA association and we don't receive rental income. So that is the term of use that is considered, we're not using it. So we don't receive HOA rental income. So therefore they can't charge the town for HOA or maintenance fees.
So they're not, they're not renting them out?
I don't know.
They are.
They are.
I would imagine they are not.
Any more discussion from anyone that hasn't spoken?
I've spoken before.
Yes, go, go ahead, as you know, audience.
Okay, so when, let's say this goes through. Is there a way to make the auction resident first?
No.
Okay. It's just an idea.
Any... Is, is it going to be an auction? Or, I hate to try to read things, read into things, but it, it seems to me as though something's in the works. Um, we gotta get rid of them by April first. And you feel pretty damn confident that we're gonna dump them by April first. And, um, the thought of giving them away for a dollar, um, something's not clear. I'm not sure what I'm missing or...
That's why I just asked that question.
You know, I don't get it.
So if we were to auction now, I can't give preference to one buyer over another. If you came to the selectmen and said, I wanna buy that for two hundred dollars, I could bring that, that to the selectmen and they, if you pass this, they could say yes or they could say no.
Okay, that's better.
So I believe that, um, going back to my prior statement, I think there's protocol and some state law, something that, there's gotta be something out there that mandates a way to do, go about this. And I'm thinking somebody in this room probably knows what that might be. For example, the scenario that's being written and thrown out here is, okay, hypothetically, um, Joe could come in and offer you X for these three units for dirt money. And, you know, as long as it was okay with the select board, which, um, it would go through, be sold to Joe, which doesn't seem above board to me.
So I think what we're asking for is, and, and, give me if I'm wrong, if anybody else feels like I'm, I'm being inaccurate here, is we recognize, okay, we don't have to pay these HOA fees, but we have to put a disclaimer, if we put these out for auction, we have to put a disclaimer that you might be responsible for nine years' worth of maintenance fees to the HOA. So the concern that we have as town is anybody that sees that disclaimer, they're not gonna buy this. They're not gonna offer the minimum bid. They're not gonna buy it at all. Because nine years of HOA fees is probably several thousand dollars. They're not worth several thousand dollars. So therefore, well, that's probably not gonna happen. So if we have to come up with some kind of agreement with the HOA to say, okay, you know, you'll waive those fees going back five years and if you have nine years of HOA fees, five years or seven years or all of the years or whatever. And we have to waive our, our back taxes on so many of them. And then we'll sell it for, say, a minimum bid of a thousand bucks. And then hopefully we get more and then we split the cost. If that type of agreement was negotiated by the select board and the HOA board so that we could get these into people's hands, that's what the selectmen are asking for right now. They want to know that you're going to be okay that if we sell those and we get five hundred dollars for them and the taxes that are owed are fourteen hundred dollars, that getting them into somebody's hands is actually gonna pay them is worth losing that, that money.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We're stuck. We're stuck. We're stuck. Where, where stuck is the problem. Where, where stuck, we don't wanna be away from nothing. We're stuck. They, they don't have value, they don't have a value coming after their own where, we're stuck. So we're coming to the town saying, we're stuck. You know, give us permission to figure out what the best thing to do is. You can't have any conversations with anybody else because we're stuck. So that's a, you know, that, that's the situation we're in. There's, there's no deals that are done. There's no, you know, if anybody wants to put together a package or bring it to the select board, I would think we'd be all ears. You know, that, that anybody comes in the room and says, great, I got ten bucks, I'm gonna buy all ten of them. That's, that's all we've got. You know, that's, that's, you know.
So there won't be an auction date or anything like that?
We could create, well, sure, we can, yeah, but we can, we, we just, we're without the ability to sell them for less than their worth. Less than, not their worth, their taxes and fees. We're stuck.
With the disclosure that they have to pay back HOA maintenance.
Correct.
Right. Like, we, we put them out to auction. It's clear in the law that you have to put the disclaimer on each one of them that they are required to pay nine years' back HOA maintenance fees, five-year back HOA maintenance fees. Anybody that has a timeshare knows that's a lot of money, so that's not gonna affect our ability to be able to sell them.
Had we, had we known that we didn't have to pay the HOA fees, we'd all be on, goes in a woman, the ordinance. Not talking about this, but we didn't. Yeah, I, I'm glad I'm not the only one who thinks that we decided not to buy them back, because that's my, you know.
Yeah, are we trying to decide here to give the selectmen authorization to negotiate with the HOAs? Or are we giving them a broad brush to negotiate with whoever and just dump them? Because it, does it, does it, seems to be.
In, in my mind, what we're asking for is what, you give the, the selectmen the authority to do what they feel is best for the town. And without that authority, you know, we don't have any conversations, you know, any means we have, we talk about it, it'll all be public. And anybody's welcome to come and say what, what they have, what they feel, but somehow we gotta get ourselves on stock.
Yes, Bruce.
Go ahead, Bruce. Oh, you, you don't remember two, that right now we're getting nothing to these.
Oh, I totally understand that.
No.
But what might.
We don't wanna sell them for a dollar or two dollars, whatever, but we would like to get them back into hands of people that will pay their taxes. And right now.
I totally understand that, Gary. My, my concern is that we inadvertently give too broad of a brush and too much control to the selectmen to disperse of these.
Actually, I think we have the power to do, disperse of them the way we feel already. Is my understanding. It goes back to the selectmen to do this. I guess we're just kind of trying to be out here transparent and asking for your permission, I guess. Without just taking it upon ourselves to go do it.
We have permission to sell them as long as we get the tax dollars back.
Right.
But we're asking for a sellable lesson. Right?
Right.
Yeah, to me, this, I'll be voting against this simply because this is too broad of a brush for a specific situation. If this was for a one-time thing until we changed the law, like, uh, the conversation that you had, uh, prior to this meeting, uh, doing it right, that would be one thing. But to give this broad a brush, impertuity is the wrong thing to do.
What we're doing. This is only good until June thirtieth. So this is to dispose of what we have right now, which is thirty-five parcels that are been acquired by tax lien law between now and June thirtieth. And at town meeting, you will have a warrant on the annual town meeting warrant that will say, moving forward, you can dispose of tax acquired property for principal costs and interest.
The same as it is now.
Same as it is now. So it's just so that we can clean up this quarter share issue. I don't think any of the other tax acquired properties we have can sell lots for twenty thousand dollars. That's not an issue. The issue is, and I don't even think the summit's gonna be that big of an issue. I think most of those will be able to sell for what we have for back taxes. It's the Jordan. Majority of those units have too much back taxes to cover, even if we tried to sell them.
Yes, Bruce.
So what would be the, the, uh, danger for the town to keep these properties until we change the ordinance? That turns them back so that the town won't have to deal with this?
So that, that's a, like you said, it's a different matter, but that's a prospective ordinance. It's moving forward. It doesn't deal with any of the back stuff. If we pass that ordinance and then we would have to write everything off if we don't sell it. That's, so there are two ways of dealing with this. I mean, we have two thousand nine taxes that haven't been paid on some of these units. At some point, the selectmen have the authority to write off those taxes because they're just not collectible. So we could start writing off taxes and then try to sell them for something that's a little more manageable. But we're coming to you saying, hey, between now and June thirtieth, we wanna be able to sell these units for whatever we can get. Whatever, whatever deal we can get that's in the best interest of the town, we wanna be able to sell these between now and June thirtieth. July first, whatever's left, we're gonna have to get principal costs and interest.
Yes, Bruce.
Why did we wait ten years to, um, to sell, to sell some of these?
Because we didn't know we had to pay the HOA fees.
Oh, that doesn't make any sense. You should, you still should have sold it to get rid of it, right?
So the policy of the town was to not foreclose on quarter shares?
Well, but if this, if we've had it for ten years and we've foreclosed on it ten years ahead, right?
No, we just foreclosed this year, right?
No, we foreclosed every year for ten years.
Well, that's ridiculous to have it sit that long.
So it is ridiculous. There's a million layers to the sun, and so we as a town decided we didn't want to foreclose. The tax collector of the town, you guys, you, you guys know it's better than I am, as a tax collector of the town, you have to stop the foreclosure. If someone has paid the tax, you have to. You don't, you know, it's, it's, it's the law. You can stop the foreclosure. That's the piece we asked. We didn't stop it. So they went to foreclosure, so we owned them, not knowing we owned them, because we didn't think we were foreclosing them. The whole thing's a mess.
We didn't know we owned them?
Correct. Correct. Because we as a town decided we didn't want them.
Well, that doesn't mean you don't know you own them.
Any further discussion? Seeing no desire for further discussion, we'll close the discussion. And it's been voted on to, um, vote this article by written ballot. And this is article two, you'll be voting on to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to dispose of tax acquired property. The terms and conditions is they deemed in the best interest of the town. Sure, if we could vote by written ballot? Yes, we have.
I guess it's an affirmative vote.
Yes, so. Keep up. So this is a yes or, yes or no question, so on a piece of paper, right? Yes or no?
I'll put the ballot box over here.
Yes. Yes, and you authorize the selectmen to dispose of the tax acquired property.
Do you give a ballot?
Yeah.
Okay. The article passes with three nay votes.
So the article.
Nine nays? Three nays.
The article, article two has passed. And I would call for a motion to adjourn this town meeting and a scene A D A.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All day.
Motion to adjourn is. Yes, so thank you all for coming. We can start getting the votes.